Welcome to. Welcome to the Barnstable Special School Committee Meeting for April twenty six, two thousand and twenty three. As a preliminary matter, this is Mike Judge Share of the Barnstable School Committee. This is an open. Meeting of the Barnstable School Committee being conducted remotely via Zoom. Consistent with the state's extension, allowing open meetings to continue remotely. I am going to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Please remember to unmute yourself to indicate your attendance and then re mute Kathy Bent.
I can hear you.
Peter Good.
Yes.
Andre King.
Here.
Joe Nystrom isn't here. Uh, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dr. Sarah Hearn.
Uh, here.
Kristin Harmon.
Here.
Jane Moynihan.
Yeah.
Mike Lambros.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Or finance guy. And Jen Krusick.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, for this meeting, the school committee is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on. The town and district websites. Additionally, this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on channel twenty two at a later date. According, we please be aware that other people can be. May be able to hear and see you. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. If you are attending as a member of the public, please keep your microphone muted. And your video turned off. When turning to the meeting ground rules, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their comments, the chair will go through the committee members. Invite each by name to provide any comments, questions, motions. Please hold off speaking until your name is called. For any response, please wait until the chair yells the floor to you. And state your name before speaking. Each vote will be taken at a roll call vote. Um, so I just wanted to kind of, well, this is going to be broadcast on twenty two. Um, it's kind of strange that we go back to Zoom school committee meetings. Um, and the reason uh, I decided to do this was a matter of time. Um, Jen had looked into the town hall, the school library, like anywhere we could do it, public. Um, the way we always do it, uh, especially the town hall. And last week being a vacation week and then this. The town hall was absolutely packed. Um, and when Kathy's motion made the motion, it was for twenty five days. And that I think is, I think it's this Sunday or Saturday or something. So. The only way we could hold it within that time is to do it via Zoom. I don't like to do it via Zoom, to be honest with you. I'd rather do it on channel eighteen live. Um, but it was, and even if Kathy hadn't made that motion and we didn't have the twenty five days, we all kind of agree that. This is something that can't be, they can't wait. We need, it's kind of time sensitive, so we want to make a decision. Um, so because of all that, I decided to just to hold it via Zoom. So having said that, um, I'll move on to one point one district vision and core values. District vision, the public schools. Educates the whole child by creating a student centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, academic needs. By creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported and engaged. Core values. In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration and community commitment. We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration, we work together while keeping students. Needs at the center of all decision making community. We build strong respectful partnerships to support student success. I'm not going to move on to one point two statement by the chair of the video and audio recording of this meeting. I remind everyone that this meeting is being recor- uh, being recorded and we broadcast on channel twenty two. I. Also remind any members of the public who wish to make. An audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as a chair. And I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Uh, moving on to one point three, public comment. Um, there will be no public comment tonight as this is a special school committee meeting. Having done all of that, we will now move on to old business two point one, which is the reason we're here. Consider options to address districts based needs at the elementary schools and approve a plan to move forward. Having said that, I will turn it over. To Sarah and to Mike.
Um, thank you. Uh, Mike and I have uh, done a lot of work. Uh, Mike has done a tremendous amount of work in um, conjunction with um, Principal Kathy Millen and Kathy Amato. Uh, and Chris Welly uh, to share some updated options for the school committee's consideration. I did want to kind of formalize this into a presentation for the um, benefit of the public. I know the committee is pretty well aware of the space concerns across our buildings. Um, but some of the feedback that I had um, from uh, you know, kind of in general, um, I didn't hear a lot of feedback, but in general was that uh, maybe the general public is less aware. Of some of the space constraints being faced uh, in schools today. Uh, particularly in light of enrollment being down uh, compared to where it was ten or so years ago. So um, we've kind of. Present, prepared a presentation for you to organize uh, the, the thoughts and the options uh, for your consideration. I'm going to share my screen. If that's okay. Um. This um, was updated this afternoon. Um, so we have an additional option um, compared to what the original. Set that was proposed um, in a um, presentation that went into board docs yesterday. Um, so there's a fifth option, um, and any revisions in this presentation are noted. Um, so we wanted to sort of set the stage of the current learning environment at both Hyannis West and B C I S. And I want to thank our principals for uh, providing this information. Um. At High West, um, we have a, a number of spaces being used um, in ways for which they were not originally intended. Uh, in an effort to um, provide a greater variety of services to students. Uh, and we've been talking uh, a lot about how um. Students' needs have grown uh, and the services uh, that schools are providing to children have grown. Um, and so you can see that um, art, health, science and technology are on carts. Um, speech is being delivered in a former locker room at the school. The library uh, is in the cafeteria. The cafeteria is actually hosting uh, quite a few um. Quite a few uh, services. Um, including the Title One offices, which are on the stage and um, partially at the preschool, which we've also talked about some space constraints there. Uh, Title One interventions in the cafeteria. Uh, we have some other offices at the Early Learning Center. Um, I had mentioned at the previous school committee meeting that the crossroad space isn't really adequate for. Uh, the services that students need for that specialized program. Our principal and assistant principal are sharing office space, math intervention in a hallway. Um, the stage is pretty much um, off limits to any. Presentations that you might um, think about or assemblies uh, that we're accustomed to and are so wonderful for school culture. Uh, the P E and health teacher office is in a hallway, gateway shares, music room. Uh, there's no designated space for O T and P T. And uh, students um, meet with community mentors in hallways. At B C I S. Um, we have some similar themes going on where music, art. Uh, science, which is through our P V L specialist and technology are on a cart. Um, one thing to note about that school is that. Uh, there is a lift that goes from the first floor to the second floor. Um, it is aging and uh, does eat into the time between uh, these classes. Uh, so that adds to some of the challenges they're experiencing. We have five E L teachers sharing two classrooms, uh, which makes instruction difficult. Um, special ed is sharing a skills practice room with Gateway and counselors. Uh, conference room is being used for a variety of purposes. Um, Gateway counselors, testing and interventions. Uh, there is a alcove um, in the special ed area. Uh, hosting O T P, P T and speech, um, which uh, does result in some scheduling conflicts. Um, our family liaison and interpreter is sharing office space with admin assistants, making confidential conversations challenging. Um. The library hosts five specialist desks. And uh, there's a challenge in storage. Um, so these are just some of the, some of the bullet points. For um, articulating the reason for additional space through portables. Uh, the current portable proposal from uh, April fifth. Is um. Summarized here where we were looking at uh, one bid. That we received in March. For a three year lease. Um, with a sizable um, unexpected um, price tag, particularly as it relates to site construction and installation. And um, a total contract price of uh, over four point two million dollars. Um, in the bid, uh, there was a consideration to include an option of used portables of up to five years old. Um, but that did not yield any results um, when we asked for that kind of, that kind of option. Um, just to sort of highlight and frame the planned use of the portables in terms of the four classroom spaces. Um, in talking with Principal Amato, um, one space would be used for art and gateway. One space for music, one for science and technology. And then one space for Title One uh, office, which would host three teachers and their uh, Title One interventions. It would enable the library to be moved up to the stage, allowing for full use of the cafeteria for eating. Uh, a special education teacher could share a space with the speech teacher that is not in a former locker room. Uh, crossroads would have an adequate space for instructional and therapeutic services. And Title One math and reading interventions could occur in a classroom setting. Um, it does not completely solve all of the space pressures. Um, there would not be an adequate library space with uh, the library being on the stage. Um, which would uh, eliminate the use of the stage for other purposes. We would still have multiple staff sharing spaces and no separate, separate space for the assistant principal. At B C I S, um, the planned use of four additional classroom spaces. Would be towards art, music and science instruction, um, and based on kind of a part time um, situation. Uh, kind of maximizing those spaces um, for the three different areas. Uh, school adjustment counselors to have a separate space for group work and lunch bunches. And a designated space for O T and P T and speech services as well as gateway, which would need it for one day. Uh, this would enable E L teachers to expand uh, into the current counselor room. Um, there would still be shared rooms for services, but uh, allow for some expansion. And um, a skills practice room uh, could become a private de-escalation space for students um, who are dysregulated. Um, technology would still remain on a cart and um. No space for the new assistant principal, which is um, in the current. Uh, school committee's budget for F Y twenty four. Um. We've been talking a lot about um, space and we've been talking about how a facility's conditions assessment um, is being conducted in light of. Uh, an enrollment forecast and we are anticipating. Uh, a presentation, um, hopefully in June, uh, that is more thorough about our space needs, not only at the elementary schools. Um, and maintenance and conditions, um, but also throughout the district. Um, but I thought it would be worth noting um, that we are seeing um, space pressures in all of our schools, uh, including B W B. West villages um, and uh, Centerville. And. The current budget uh, does include additional staffing. Um, we've talked a lot about additional students' needs. And um, space in all of our, in all of our schools is being um, very significantly considered with respect to um. Again, needing that variety of need that students are presenting. Um, because the focus of tonight is on High West and B C I S. I'm not going to believe this, the points in this slide, but it is available for the public and for you as committee members to see. Um, that all of our buildings um. Which were built um, some time ago, um. You know, don't necessarily um, meet uh, you know, kind of current. The, the way we're currently uh, needing to provide services to students. Uh, a common question um, that I've been hearing is if our enrollment has been dropping in recent years, why do we have space challenges? Um, and like I said, um, the way we're using um, space has really shifted. It's no longer a, a situation where we're having uh, twenty four. Uh, or more students in a classroom with one staff member. It really is a, a team of individuals with a variety of specialties. Providing academic interventions, counseling services, targeted instruction for English learners. Uh, specialized instruction for students with special needs. Uh, an increase in related services and um, we're seeing more and more specialization of our staff. When we um, started to um, look at options for consideration, uh, I think it's important to note that. These are a, a finite series of options focused on a few assumptions. Um, the assumption here was looking at short term solutions um, with the idea that a longer term facility plan will need to be developed for implementation. Um, to address pressure points across the district. Um, we also um. Kind of looked into um, some additional assumptions related to S R funding. Um, so I think a previous assumption had been funding would be secured through. A supplemental appropriation. Uh, but we uh, and Chris in particular with Jackie Gillis and, and Kristen. Did some research around uh, applicability of S R funding that is still available to the district. Uh, which would be um, potentially eligible to be used for a, a project like this. Um. It would require uh, an additional step of review from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I don't have an indication uh, if that would cause. Um, a big delay. If I'm imagining that we might be able to um, secure the funding concurrently with proceeding to the town for funding. Um, we have contacted Desi of the possibility, so they're aware um, to kind of help facilitate things if we decide to move forward with. Um, kind of offsetting some of the costs uh, through uh, remaining S R funds. I'm gonna um. Pause for a second and turn it over to Mike, who's going to run through uh, some of the facilities aspects of these different scenarios.
Thank you. I just want to start off by thanking everyone for their time tonight. Um, so I'll jump right in. Option number one, accepting the existing bid as was previously explained. So this bid, the total cost was four million two hundred and eighty eight thousand seven hundred and twenty six. Um, this is the most favorable in terms of a fall delivery estimated October. Um. So five hundred and seventy five thousand one hundred and fifty four remains from the initial, initial appropriation for the project. This nets a four million one hundred and forty three thousand five hundred and seventy two um. Dollar price tag. So the next steps for option one would be to request supplemental appropriation. From school savings account from town council. Um, this required two reads. And then also there's a thirty day waiting period. Um. As mentioned before, approximately a million dollars in S R funding may be available. Um, and we'll pursue the approval of Desi for that. Uh, the estimated start date will, for the contractor would be this summer. Um, at the end of the lease, we may be able to do an R F P to purchase the used modulars. Um, this was updated this bullet point today.
Um, I would just add that the R F P to purchase the used modulars may um, help with a cost savings uh, in terms of reducing. Um, the, the costs to break them down uh, wouldn't exist and um, you know, we don't quite know how much the cost would be uh, if it were to be put out for purchase. Um, but um, kind of early indications is that it would not. Um, would not be a, a huge amount and we'll speak more to that when we get to option five.
Um, so option two, rebid Hyannis West for classroom uh, units and B C I S two classroom units.
Mike, can I jump in for one second?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted, the next couple of options are in response to the conversation that the committee was having at the last meeting, wondering if. Um, the full four classroom units would be uh, needed at both schools. And so we did. Want to run a couple scenarios that had a smaller project scope. So, sorry. Uh, Mike, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Um, so this is for four classrooms at Hyannis West and two at. Uh, B C I S, the estimated cost for this would be four point one eight million. Um, this is an internal estimate using the. Previous, uh, the current bid we have, the net after the unencumbered uh, previous appropriation is. Three million six hundred and four thousand eight hundred and forty six. Um, this option does add an additional six week delay. Um, this is broken down into one to two weeks to get this back out to bid. Um, we typically bid for three to four weeks, four is suggested in this situation. And uh, one week for the review of the bids. Um. Free cash is not available after June thirtieth, as it needs to be recertified by the state. Um. Process to request additional funding from town council would need to be. Um. Sorry, um, additional funding from town council would need to process as a special capital request. Uh, may offset through S R funding pending Desi approval, as stated before. So option three, again. Um. Another option. Rebid only Hyannis West, one of four classroom, uh, one for classroom unit. This is an internal estimate of two point three five eight million. Um. The net outcome for this would be one million seven. Thousand two hundred and forty six. Um, this is also a six week delay with the same breakdown, one to two weeks out to bid, four weeks for the bid. And then another week once they return um, for review. Um. Same as below. Uh, this is free cash is not available June thirtieth, so this would have to go as a special um, capital request.
For the next slide, which is three B, which um, also contains a rebid at High West only. Um, one question that we uh, anticipated was. With B C I S being a school of choice, um, one. Way to reclaim a classroom would be to accept fewer kindergarten students and have three sections instead of four. Um, we ran the addresses of the eighty students who have signed up for um, the B C I S um. Choice, um, choice school. And the overwhelming majority of them um, reside in the Hyannis West District. So um, one could imagine that uh, that would um, return a. Significant number of students to Hyannis West kindergarten potential. Another space there. Uh, so for numbers, uh, we just ran numbers on an expanded project at Hyannis West, although um. You know, I'm not going to weigh in um, very strongly about uh, some of these various options because I think the committee. You know, kind of needs to wrestle with uh, some of the, the different situations here, um, given the delay. And um, the, the gain uh, that would, that would come um, of just one classroom at B C S, I think. Um. It, it really just exacerbates um, a concern at Hyannis West if we were to do that uh, at B C I S. So option three B is a six classroom unit.
Thank you. So, yep, this is option three B. Uh, this is one six classroom unit at Hyannis West, um, internal estimate of three point three million. Additional architectural fees would be roughly twenty five thousand for design. Um, the net for this option is two million seven hundred and forty nine thousand eight hundred and forty six. Uh, this is an additional eight week delay, one to two weeks for new architectural drawings, one to two weeks to get this out to bid. Um, we would bid this for four weeks and again, another week for review. Um, same story with thirty days or June thirtieth, the free cash, um, and this would have to go to town council for a special appropriation. Um, this is option four. This is a redesign. Um, and rebid without utility connections. We had mentioned this at the previous school committee briefly, uh, meeting briefly. Um. This is without utility connections, connecting the units to the schools via a corridor. So no bathrooms would be needed. Um, and there'd be no custodial closet as well. Um. Estimate, we do not have an estimate at this time. Uh, being reviewed by the architect. The uh. This needs to be reviewed by the building department. Once the architect does a um, building code analysis and also the fire department. Um, this would. Be anticipated to be the least expensive due to the reduced site construction, as you saw in. The breakdown on a previous slide, the site construction was a vast. Um, the, it was almost, it was a majority of the cost, I have one point eight million, I believe. Um. This option for causes a ten week delay. Um, we will need four to six weeks with the architect to um. Create the drawings. Um, design, get this out for review with the building and fire department. Um, and then the standard four weeks to bid and one week review. Um. And again, the same with the free cash as of June thirtieth in the town council. Special capital request.
Um, option five was updated this afternoon. Um, we've been working up to the minute to get as many um, reasonable uh, options on the table for the committee's consideration and in talk, in talking with um. The procurement office, um, this came forward uh, today as a, as a potential.
Yes, um, so option five is to rebid the existing project. Um, the difference would be. We would rebid for purchase instead of lease, so that is Hyannis West for classrooms and B C I S for classrooms with bathroom connections. Um. The estimate. This is a rough estimate of three point six million with a net of three million twenty four thousand eight hundred and forty six. This would only cause a six week delay. And again, the one to two weeks to get it out to bid, four weeks to bid and a one week review. Um.
Coincidentally, um, the uh, bidder had inquired about the status of the project and so it provided an opportunity for a conversation. Um, so we certainly couldn't hold the bidder to this number, um, you know, from any sort of legal standpoint, but in a conversation. Uh, they had noted that it would be less expensive to purchase uh, than to lease uh, overall with respect to the project. And then uh, we. Um, inquired with procurement about the legality of modifying the current bid um, from a lease to a purchase, um, but we would need to go back out to rebid. Um, according to procurement.
So Sarah, if I can jump in just to break down why it is less, because it, it took me a minute to wrap my head around it too. Um, you would never expect a lease to be less than a purchase. Um, that's because if you look at the breakdown of the costs by year, year one and construction. Is construction of the new units. These are new modular units, so we're be, we're paying for the construction of these units. As long, as um. As well as year one's lease. If this was just a purchase, you wouldn't have year one lease. You would have just the construction of the units and just the site work. Um, you wouldn't have year one, two, three lease and also you wouldn't have the demo. So that's how. One, we reflect the three point six million rough estimate and also how it's less to actually purchase than lease.
Um, so this slide um, has been updated just to reflect um, five different um. Four, uh, six, six different options. Uh, the, the middle ones I labeled three A and three. Because they uh, sort of have the same sort of overall look in terms of just rebidding for one school. Um. Summarizing uh, in this slide um, for your consideration, uh. Within, you know, a certain reasonable set of parameters, um, we could rebid a base project with a few different options uh, to determine the best one. And um, all options of rebidding do carry a risk of having no bids come back. Um. And then lastly, I would just summarize um, for you and for the community. Um, the idea of mitigation strategies, um, as I noted, I don't think, I don't put this on this slide in any way to note that I see this as a good alternative. Um, but just highlighting that there are some space challenges across all five elementary schools and that the portables do leave some space challenges still. Um, the on-call architect can review on a school by school basis, um, our space use and make some recommendations for minor modifications that might help with. Um, repurposing uh, effectively, and that would be kind of an interim step, a small scale step towards long-term facilities planning. Um, so with that, that concludes our presentation and I'll turn it back over to you, um, Mike Judge.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Um. I, I think actually before you get rid of that, oh.
Yeah.
No, that's okay. No, it's okay. Um, I think if, if once we kind of get talking, I think maybe I, I leave it up to. Kathy, Andre and Peter, but I think maybe having that one that has the different prices all the way across and what you're getting, maybe like keep that up. Just so that kind of gives us a, because I was over here trying to scratch down numbers and, and that was perfect because it just kind of showed us. Everything across the board. Um, but I'll leave it, I'll throw it open to Peter, Andrea, Kathy, just. Unmute and start speaking.
I'll go first, if you don't mind, Mike.
Yeah, whatever. I'm not even, I'm not going to call anybody, just because otherwise I have to go up and down the screen, just start talking.
Okay, great. Um. I, I'll, I'll, first of all, thank, we asked for options at the last school committee and um. And this was great. We get a ton of options and I appreciate the hard work that went into this. Uh, Sarah, Mike and anyone else who participated in this. Um, option one to me is, is the same one we, I rejected. Um, nothing's changed, so. That to me is out. Uh, option two.
Whoop, you froze, Peter. One sec. One sec.
This is space and I, but I do believe High West.
One sec, Peter, you actually froze for, you were like, you would, you did option one and then you were just starting option two when you froze.
Okay, I'm okay now.
Yep, so if you want to stop back with option two.
Sure, uh, option two had some appeal to me, but two less buildings at um BCIS and the savings didn't seem to be that much. Um, it, I do believe both building, uh, both schools have space issues for sure. I I believe High West is a little bit more dire, so that was a possibility, but without the savings, I kind of threw that out. Um, option uh three A, three B, I didn't like at all. Uh, get to option four where we're gonna rebid, redesign, rebid without the bathroom connections had appealed to me. The the bid that came in aga- again for you know, watching, we we were kind of estimating a one point seven million dollar cost and the bid came in at about four point three million dollars. Which was, which was shocking to everybody. To me, it was highway robbery. And the bathrooms cost one point eight million dollars. Uh, you know, whether these are gold-plated bathrooms, I don't know. But option four, if that can be done, had some appeal. Uh, and option five, it didn't make sense. Mike explained it to me. Um, the actual purchase of of this. It it gets everybody the buildings they want. We save some money. And you know, that also appeals appeals to me, so option four and five, I think we just keep option one. Um, I know we have to go to the town council to um to uh approve the supplemental appropriation of our savings money. I don't think they're going to approve it at that bid. For what we're getting at four point three million dollars, and if we just accept it, I I don't think they'll approve it personally. So um, I could definitely discuss uh option four and option five.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Peter. Uh, Andrea, Kathy, whoever wants to chime in, just start talking.
Yeah, just Mike, uh, for me, uh, again, thank you uh to Sarah, uh, to Mike, to Chris, uh, the work that you've done in terms of putting uh the uh statistics together and providing a clear view. Um, you know, for me, I'm looking at, you know, to Peter's point, uh, option four, redesigning uh the 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 uh classrooms, uh, providing a a corridor, it removes um the uh the bathrooms uh and the cost associated uh with those bathrooms, but I look at that and it says a ten week delay. And then it says the overall price is to be determined, so if option one's clearly unacceptable, I like the idea of innovation and and being um you know, imaginative in terms of looking at, you know, how can we put this together in in a way um that's cost effective and this, you know? It comes in at one point seven for the first bid and then you look at the the bid that we got at the school committee meeting, one point eight uh million dollars just for the bathrooms alone, so the bathroom issue is paramount here and option four seems to alleviate that, but we have a ten week delay. And we have an uncertain final cost, that's my uh only, uh, those are some of my considerations there. Uh, with option three B, it was uh to rebid at High West alone uh for six classrooms, but that's only going to be two point eight million if I'm correct there. Uh, I don't want to get into, you know, that seems if if it's just one school versus another and 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 that concerns me. But, you know, with option uh three B, an eight week delay and six classrooms at Hyannis West. You know, that that that's something I'm I'm interested in considering. Uh, and just in conclusion, the rebid at High West for four and then BCIS for two, I think that was option and that's going to save a million dollars with a six week delay, uh, that seemed to have a little bit of 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 parity there. So I I was receptive to that also.
Okay, Kathy?
I have a couple of questions because I need to get it in my head. So, the original bid was four temporary classrooms at High West and four temporary classrooms at BCIS, that's, is that accurate?
Yes.
So when I look at the rebid at High West at six, how how is that number six coming because the anticipated need is that we need six because of the anticipated growth?
It was um in consideration if we accepted three kindergarten classrooms at BCIS instead of four. And shift, I would just note, um, you know, that might be okay for one year hypothetically. Um, it does have a delay which would create some challenges to start off the school year. Um, but I, you know, it it doesn't really solve anything in year two and year three.
No, I I just wanted to make sure because I was, I'm looking at four and four for a total of eight. And then the rebid, I was just trying to get the number of units straight.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so first of all, I want to say that the time between the April meeting, when we first discussed this and up to today, I have not received any feedback from the general community. I did receive one communication from an individual who addressed both from a parent perspective, having children in one of these buildings and from a teacher perspective as a teacher in one of these buildings. And it encouraged us um and gave some very good information and well-thought-out comments from both of those perspectives as to why there was disappointment in not approving the initial um proposal, so um, for the sake of anyone who's watching, I I just wanted to point out that I heard nobody opposed to the projects at all. So um, I did go visit BCIS earlier this week and walk through. I had previously walked through High West last school year. And I can, I can attest and I thoroughly agree that this is needed and there's no question in my mind after having seen both situations that first and foremost, I want to commend all of the staff at each one of those schools who you could not even tell that they have any stress related to the space constraint constraints whatsoever. And yet it is so obvious and clear that they are under a severe space crunch, and so I'm amazed at both the resilience of the staff, the students that I had observed walking through the halls. They're meeting the needs of the students, but they're doing it under really dire conditions of that, those buildings. So um, looking at these, I only have one other um, a couple of other questions. If we did the purchase option, would we potentially have the option to resell to recover some of the initial cost of the purchase years down the road when we solved all our space needs a different way?
So uh, I I kind of want to defer to Chris on that, I don't know. Um, if he has any better information, I would assume there is a situation where we could be able to sell these. Um, I, however, I don't know what the value will be.
Actually, Kathy, can I just jump in for one second? Because I got a question kind of with yours, but so what about, okay, so say like if we're not sure we can resell them, whether we can or we can't. Mike, this would probably be a question more for you. Can we move those like to, could we move those to other buildings or could we use them for other other things like storage or like could we use them for or even move them to other buildings or whatever?
Yeah, so good question. You kind of answered part of it, or there's a couple of answers, yes. However, there's going to be a cost associated with it.
Well, yeah, they got the site cost still, right?
You're you're going to have some site costs, you're going to have some demolition costs to the current site to cap and cover and pave back over um the utilities. However, you will reduce the site costs in any other location if you're using them for storage, right?
I mean, I know that we have a lot of storage problems too, and not that I want to use these dwellers later on down the road, but if they get to a point where like miracles are miracles and we solve our space issues with our kids, we could use them for, because I know there's also a real problem in our district for for storage issues as far as storage cost and, or not storage cost, but where to put stuff. I mean, that's, that's just a real problem also, so they could be used for, or maybe they're in a different building where they don't need the bathrooms because they're being used for something that doesn't need bathrooms or which would reduce the site cost, but they're ours to do. Even if the, I'll go to Chris for the 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 selling part, but we could use these for other, we could repurpose them, I guess, be the word.
Yeah. So, and that's where I was headed. I do know that if we did bring, if we, if we were, did have the option and they were worth something and we had no use and we sold them, I do know those funds go back into the general fund, not specifically to the schools, so I just was curious as to whether it's a zero disposal or a potential recovery of something if we could sell the units, because if you can purchase used units through the vendor, then, you know, I was curious as to um our options. So when I look at all of these options, given what I had said to narrow it down, I'm weighing option four and option five. And before I could make a decision, I would like to hear from the principals what your feelings are about re- uh removing the plumbing, the bathrooms and having them become connected to the schools and if you feel that that's definitely a workable solution at each of your sites.
Good, Kathy and Kathy, whichever one of you wants to speak first.
Um, I I would need to know a little bit more about what that would look like because that, right now, where it's scope would be set is one of our doors that is uh, one of our doors that is a fire exit. Um, and also, you know, it's where all the kids go out to recess, it's one of our main exits. So I would, I'm just trying to visualize, are they now having to go through another set of classrooms in order to to evacuate the building if needed, so that was my main concern. Also, the other concern is um, if there's no utilities, is it in, is it hooked up to um intercom fire alarms? How would, how would that work?
Um, yeah, so thanks Kathy. Yes, you, we would have to have intercom, so you would have utilities such as electrical and technology, um, fire, safety, security. Um, we would not have running water and um sewage. So those are the utilities that are costing the most and we'd remove those, so you wouldn't have the bathrooms. Um, as far as another set of doors, we would have to maintain the egress. So your corridor would pick up the existing egress you're thinking right outside of your boiler room, right where they're going. Um, and you would enter into a corridor. Um, the doors would be held open by magnets, the magnets would close just like the rest of your doors, but there would be an exit before you get into the additional space, so along this corridor, you would not have to go to the corridor, all the way down the corridor and into the classrooms, you would have an exit before.
Okay.
Kathy Mill, uh Kathy Amato, do you have any other questions or are you all set?
No, and then I, my other question is, so it would basically be in front of then the classrooms that are existing there, right? So classrooms that we have now would be looking into that area and and that takes up a huge amount of our playground space as well.
So I can, I can share a um, a rough site plan if you'd need. It would be roughly a forty to fifty foot corridor, if we want to shorten it, we could. Um, so it wouldn't be right on top of the other classrooms, they wouldn't be able to, you you wouldn't have students looking at each other, if that's the concern, you wouldn't be able to unless you've really tried to look into the other space, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for a second, the kindergarten is for a second and third, they're going to really try. Kathy Mills?
So I I think um for me, the uh redesign project to attach the units does have some appeal on one hand in that it seems like a more secure um way by which, through which children can access the portables and it eliminates some of the issues around inclement weather um during passage time. My reservation about um that is the the ten week delay and the unknown cost. Um, and I I, so that that makes me a little uncomfortable, I would really hate for us to, you know, delay action further and then find out that it in fact is not going to give us the cost savings that we were hoping for. So it's just, I think, a fear of the unknown for me. Um, in terms of the rebid for the classrooms for purchase, that to me seems like um a a good um way to reduce the cost. The other thing I want to go back to though about the the redesign project with the attached units. Um, in doing that, we've eliminated any access to running water. And I think that really creates some some um additional uh stresses uh in terms of use, so it means really art would be difficult to put out there and both Kathy and I had planned to put art out into those spaces. Science also, oftentimes you want to have access to running water. Um, so I think, you know, it's appealing in some ways, but it also does restrict the potential use for it in the future.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Do either Kathy Amato or Kathy Mill, do you have anything else to say?
Um, I I would just add that the the purchase, I was, that option came uh late to us today as well, so uh, I hadn't thought about that before, but I'm thinking, I wonder if that just allows for um as as you've talked about some options in the future, I also think of Enik Hub preschool that is on our campus. As you know, um, they're growing as well, so um I think having that on our campus would only benefit uh everyone involved.
Okay, excellent. Thank you both for spending some time with us on a lovely Wednesday night.
Sorry, Mike, I did have, I did have one other, one other. In terms of um eliminating um the potential addition of space for BCIS, I do have to put a plug in for my school, for my students, for my staff. Um, I think there are significant uh concerns that have been outlined by Sarah. Um, and I think uh in terms of equity, um, in terms of caring for all of our vulnerable students, I do, I do want to make sure that you know, there is careful consideration of the students here at BCIS, I think as a a school of choice. Um, we want to make sure that we are making an appealing choice for families. Um, we want to keep our enrollment healthy and um we want to, we want to remain full. And in doing that, it benefits all of the other elementary schools, um, because if people don't choose our school, those students go to their, as you know, their homeschool, so I do think we want to make sure that we're making this an attractive choice for families.
Okay, thank you both.
Mike, can I add one more?
Yeah, sure, go ahead. You guys both know me, I'm pretty easygoing.
That's okay. Um, I just want to kind of reiterate what Kathy Bent had said as well. Um, for those of you who might know or not know, this has been an ongoing project or question for about two and a half years now. Um, so the fact that Kathy recognized that we have asked our staff and students to make it work for uh close to three years now, and so I agree, looking at that, there's even a consideration of a delay, even six weeks is is feeling um hard to ask staff to do already. Uh, understanding that uh it it's going to happen at this point regardless, but when I look at even a six week delay is going to be hard as we will be moving people during the school year. Um, but this has been an extremely long process, so I just want to thank Kathy for um noticing that the staff and students have been uh making it work for a long time without complaint.
And and I I want to piggyback on Kathy. Um, for, I was thinking about this um when um Sarah was giving detail about all of the different spaces that our students are are using and our staff are using throughout the day. For young children, I think consistency, routine, predictability is really important. And I I can speak for my school and I'm sure Kathy has the same experience, we have, we have some of our most vulnerable students who um are being moved from place to place and displaced from day to day. And we have, in my space, we have what we call our skills room, that room is being used by OTPT speech counseling, um, testing today, we use for MCAS makeups. Um, when students are disreg- dysregulated, that is our our safest place to bring them. And so from day to day, we have very, very um students who are most vulnerable, who are being And so from day to day, we have very ver- um students who are most vulnerable, who are being bounced around. Along with their teachers, so that means that also we're not able to put up um. In those rooms, we're not able to set them out up in a predictable way to build independence for those students. Um and a level of comfort that I think they deserve.
Okay, excellent. Thank you both very much.
Um um my my only other comment at this point would be that. I think if we number five keeps the bathrooms. Yes, no.
Yes, yes.
And at no loss to um educational space.
No, so what it is is it's the same as bid one, the one that we originally got. The only difference is before we were leasing them, this is the number five is just purchasing them.
And then I I would say down the road if um someone Kathy um Millen brought up. The concern about inclement weather and also um. Feeling far removed from the school. If if we purchased, it still wouldn't down the road preclude us from attaching. Some of those units to the school for a more cohesive nature. Is that accurate?
Mike, can you rephrase that?
So.
So like, can I? So what she's saying is, is so right now we don't have a canopy. For number five, if we bought the 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 four and four, right? We don't have a canopy. So if all of a sudden down the road, we were like, you know what? There needs to be some sort of corridor. Or something for the kids for the inclement cold weather and all of that. Can we add that later on down the road? Is that what you're asking Kathy?
Yeah, um we of course we could, but there's going to be, there's going to be expense to that.
Everything, everything is a price tag.
Correct.
I I'm done. Finally, sorry. I apologize, but I I just wanted to make sure that. You know, I had a good scope of all the options.
Okay, so let me uh so I got a few questions. Um first of all, I know we've talked um. About the Esser approximately one million dollars and Esser may be available to offset the cost. So I know we've talked about Esser uh through our budget process and using some of Esser throughout our budget. Um will we in fact have, I'm not saying exactly a million, but are we going to have funds left over? To put towards this project and Esser with our current budget that we passed.
We still have, yeah, we still have money in Esser that we could put towards this project. Um one million.
Okay.
One million would leave about a hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand, I believe.
That's unspoken for.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so that takes care of that. Um so uh looking at these, um. For me, one is out. Uh two, two, three A and three B. Well, I'll be really honest with you. So for me, number four, uh I I don't, there's too many unknowns. Um I mean, we could be, I mean, we could be in, what was it? How long to do the whole process? Like eight weeks or whatever it was. At ten weeks or whatever it was, and we could be in the same spot if that comes back at six million dollars. I mean, we could be sitting here in ten weeks being like, huh, you know what? We're at the city, we thought four point two was bad, now we're up to five point two. And we got a and they're connected, but we still the same problem. So for me, the fact that five with number four doesn't have an amount. I that's to me is a huge red flag just because we could just be kicking the can down the road for ten weeks and in ten weeks be in the same spot. Um and it it's, it delays it ten weeks and it just doesn't. I I don't, I don't know. For me, that just doesn't really do it. Um for me, number five makes the most sense. Um first of all, we're getting our four classrooms for for uh High West and for DCIS, so I mean, they're going to have their classrooms. Um we're keeping the bathrooms, we're keeping water, as Kathy and Kathy both said. You know, having water out there is is isn't an absolute hundred percent necessity, but you know what? It would make it a lot easier for the classrooms that did. I I can see both of them sitting there talking. And being like, oh, I'm going to have to reshuffle what I put out there and what would it wouldn't be probably what the list they gave to us because they would have to reshuffle. Um i- if we didn't do bathrooms, so this takes care of that. Um it takes, to me, this is kind of everything. And it was one point seven, our original thing, I think Peter was one point seven to million, we thought to buy him or one point five million to buy him. Um and this is at three, but we're purchasing them. So granted, we'd double, we're almost doubling the price. But instead of renting them for three years and giving them back for an extra one point five million, we're buying them. So then they're ours, so we can use them for whatever school. Or for whatever purpose we want to use them after we, and it's not like, okay, in three years, we still have the same problem. Now what do we do? Or okay, let's see if we can rent them for another three years. Well, we're just saying the four point one. The four point two million is just to rent them for three years. If we want to rent them for another three years after that, it's going to cost us not the not that four point two, but it's still going to cost us. A couple hundred thousand dollars a year for years four, five and six, say. Well, that's another six hundred thousand on top of the four point two million, so now you're almost up to five million. Well, will we spend the three point, the three million now? We put them in, then other than maintenance and the regular maintenance and stuff like that, they're ours. We don't have to, like, you're putting the money up front, and then after that, they're ours to do what we wish with. Where any of the other options to lease, they're not ours. After three years, we give them back and we still have the same problem. The only option for me that makes sense is number five, because that solves, I'm not saying all our problems, Sarah. And I'm not even saying Kathy and Kathy that you're still not going to have constraints. I get that. But at least it's a step in the right direction and they're permanently, so. Future school committees or or future superintendents or Sarah, whoever. Can decide, okay, you know what? These things are falling apart. Now we need to do something else. Or it's been three years, let's find something else to do and like more of a permanent solution. But this doesn't, I I just think you're paying three million upfront, but then after that. There's just going to be a maintenance cost and that's it, where every other option, we're paying, we're leasing it. So every year, we're going to have a lease payment of probably a couple hundred thousand dollars every year that number five, we don't get, we get rid of. Um so that's kind of my thing. Six week delay, I I wish. I know Kathy in 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 both schools, I appreciate what the staff has done. I appreciate what you two have done. I know that. Like, this was supposed to be happening a year and a half ago, and here we are still having this conversation. I'm sure it's like Groundhog Day and it's like. I'm sure your staff is very frustrated in the fact that it's like, wait a minute, I thought they were getting in. They haven't even bought them yet. Like, I I get that. I understand that. I apologize for that. Um but to me. I think purchasing is for me in my personal life, and I know. Peter, you kind of talked before, um well, like if you had a, what was it, a five hundred thousand dollar bathroom in your house and it came in at a billion? You know, about how personally you'd be like, yeah, no. I'm not a person that I lease things. I believe in buying it because at least you don't have to keep make, once you pay it off, it's yours. Well, with these, once we pay it off, it's ours. And that's, I believe, a huge benefit for the taxpayers. Uh because we're not, okay, like I said, at three years, we're still in the same. We're still on the same problem, then we're going to rent them for another two, three years. It was it a hundred and seventy nine thousand a year, so we're still paying. Now it's no longer two point seven or one point, I'll even do the cheapest at one point seven. Now it's going to be one point nine eight. Two, two point one eight, and it's just going to keep going up where five point, uh number five is three million and we're done. So that's my take on it. Um so as having said that, what's, what do we want to do? Peter, we'll go back to you just because you started this. Now that everybody kind of talked, what are you thinking?
Yeah, okay. Um yeah, I my two choices were numbers four and five um that I could live with. Um I think uh Mike mentioned, we're talking about unknown prices. I think I thought Mike mentioned four would be the cheapest of them all, so. Um am I correct with that, Mike?
Correct, um because of the large expense for the site work.
Okay.
The expected connections would not cost one point eight combined for both locations.
But I I also understand the need for um. Water, bathrooms, et cetera. So um I could live with numbers four or five. Um uh both are going to be cheaper than where we were. Three weeks ago, number five, you get to own the building, so that that's a big plus. So.
Okay.
So that's where I'm at.
Okay, sounds good. Andre, where are you at?
Yeah, Mike, again, uh for me. Terms of option four, uh and Peter, that's an important clarification, you know, in that, you know, you said that there are potential cost savings. Uh with four uh that made it appealing, the exorbitant cost of uh the bathrooms, you know, as had been noted in this entire. Uh scheme, you know, probably the primary driver of the cost uh. Being uh being those bathrooms, and so that being alleviated and, you know, it coming in uh much lower. Uh but as has been noted, the ten week delay and then the uncertainty uh with option four is is concerning. Uh option five, you know, a million dollars in savings uh from the from the current bid, the opportunity. Uh to have uh to have purchased them, the same timeline essentially uh of all the other bids. Um you know, I could accept that. Um then you look at the Esser funding that that goes into offset the three million, three million dollar cost. Um Mike, my my question beyond, you know, in, you know, Kathy, you had alluded. I as well, uh you know, heard from the community and their concerns regarding, you know, the need for portables a- at these schools. Uh the 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 question about our students and their enrichments. You know, their enrichment experiences that are taking place uh at our other elementary schools, that students at these schools do not have uh the opportunity. Uh to to have those same experiences because uh classrooms are combined, you know, or non-existent. Uh you know, and so especially, uh we've been having a conversation uh in education. About gaps in learning and loss of learning and the impacts of the pandemic specifically. On our youngest students. And so we're seeing here that uh again, our youngest students beginning their education journey are are being disadvantaged. Uh so 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 that feedback from the community certainly resonated. Uh and again, in in terms of uh option five, I I I can. Uh get behind it. Um you know, we're saving um a a a million dollars. Uh in relation to the the uh in- initial bid. Um and and uh we we're owning these these uh facilities i- in in perpetuity, which is appealing.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Do you have anything else to add?
No, um. Nothing else to add.
Or anything else to say, I should say?
I I would um support, I think the best option considering the time and everything else would be option five.
Okay.
I hope that it would meet, um I hope that it would be sufficient to meet the longer term growth as well. Um and and provide flexibility. I think if we keep those. Uh bathrooms in there, that gives the flexibility for rearranging when the demographics change. So I I would support um five.
Okay, I won't even speak anymore because it sounds like we have kind of a consensus. Um can I get a motion?
Move to approve obtaining a new bid for for temporary class, oh, what's?
Uh which, we don't have that motion.
You don't have, no, move to approve attaining. Um a new bid to purchase four classrooms at High West. And four classrooms at BCIS. For temporary classroom units.
How about as outlined in our paper?
As outlined in.
Tonight's.
Minutes tonight. So move, move to approve, obtaining a bid. To purchase four temporary classroom units at High West Elementary and four temporary. Um classroom units at Barnstable Community Innovation School um as proposed in tonight's materials.
Jane, does that work for you?
I'm sorry, yes.
No, I'm just making sure that legally that that, I mean, you obviously heard what all of us said. Does that, does that motion take care of what we're all saying?
I think it does. I think you've added it that it's consistent with the materials for.
Right, so should we put in the amount of three million twenty four or should we just?
We're getting a new bid, so.
You're gonna get it, you're gonna get a bid, you're gonna wait and see what that bid is, and then you would vote on that bid.
Okay, okay. Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not just making it. Oh, and I know Kathy doesn't mean to, but I just want to make sure we don't have to put the number in there. It's it's just a rebid it, so we're all motion. Can I get a second for the motion?
Second.
Uh. E- either Peter, 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 either seconded it.
Sure.
Having, so this is a roll call vote just because we're on Zoom.
Okay, can I ask a question at this?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
I I know we're putting this number five out to bid before we vote. And and that to me is a little scary. Uh after our first, um you know, we're we're saying we're going to save a million dollars. What if something horrendous again happens that it's five point two million dollars again? I guess we're back, we're back to the drawing board is, I guess?
You're not obligated to accept the bid.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Uh what happens to the current bid? Because if we if we kept the current, we have to rebid. If we were redesigning the project.
We can reject it.
To to right, okay.
We can reject it, so it's in, it's in procurement where we've we've received the bid. We don't have to accept it, and if we've decided we're not going to, then procurement could send a letter saying that um we reject the bid. Um.
Do we have to reject before this goes out?
No, it would automatically lapse after a certain period of time where we didn't um take it. So I think, again, if we're going to rebid, this vendor probably is going to want to be involved in that. Um because they already built a project and have the specs, so um I suspect the numbers will be different. Um but again, we 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 would have to go through that whole procurement process again. It's pretty much set up because we already have the information. Um Mike and Amber would just have to get together in terms of what would be um. Chacked it up to the community. So I think we can get this going pretty quickly.
Okay, any other questions before we vote? Andre, do you have any questions? Are you good?
No further questions, Mike.
Okay, Kathy, you're good. Peter's good. Okay, so it's a role, so of of there was a motion and seconded, it's a roll call vote, Andre?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And chairs, yes, passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody. Um that will conclude, that was our only agenda item, so that will conclude our special school committee meeting for. Oh yeah, can I get a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
The motion seconded, Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chairs, yes, passes unanimously. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
Thanks so much.